Ms. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Mr. Jerpy, will you please lead the pledge?
My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board, I need a motion in a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mrs. Blatner. Ms. Hutchinson, please call the roll.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Robles?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have two topics on the agenda. The first one is the middle school capital project budget update. Dr. Schuler, please introduce and share any additional information from staff.
Appreciate that. So just quick reminder for the board as we get into both topics tonight. We have two topics on your committee, the whole agenda. First is that we're going to give you a budget and site logistics update on the middle school capital project. As that first issuance of bids are making their way out. Joe Popnickless is here from Nicholas and Associates to give you both a budget control update as well as logistics update. And then two, Mrs. Murphy is going to lead a discussion on our learning acceleration work focusing on a few different aspects, especially of our reading work. So happy to reintroduce Joe Popnickless. Just quick reminder to the board when we get to questions, please use your microphone. You're not going to hear yourself through speaker, but it is for the purpose of streaming of the meeting. If you don't talk into the mic, folks will not be able to hear it. So Joe, floor is yours.
All right. Appreciate having us here to talk a little bit about site logistics, budget update, and a little bit of timeline as well. So we could start here with the site logistics. We'll start with Monroe. The green designation, that's going to be the addition on the northwest of the existing school. As far as staging and site logistics and the parking area, we've designated the north green space at the top for that. As far as dates, so June 2025 is when we would implement this logistics plan. So the red line, that would be our temporary construction fence. All right? So June 25 is what we have tagged to August 2026 for the new addition area. And then the north green space, although that would be complete in the fall of '26, we show it being usable again in spring of '27. Just from the time that we restore it, it's always good practice to allow the sod to establish before getting back on there and disrupting that. So we show that till spring of 2027. The red arrow, that'll be construction traffic coming in and out off of Manchester. We do anticipate overlap. The blue arrow would be ongoing school activities and traffic coming in and out of the large parking lot on the south side of Manchester. So that's going to be a coordination piece just to limit the overlap that we have in the mornings and in the afternoons the best we can to provide a safe site. This is nice. We avoid the walkway, the village walkway coming from Manchester up and over the tracks. We avoid potential use of county property and fairground property. So this really keeps everything on district property.
What's the gap between the last day of school and the first day of work starting?
Probably a week or so. Yeah, we'd want to get right in there to start this work. So this will be phase one.
I thought maybe it'd be hours instead of days.
John, we have told staff at the building and through administration, at least from our perspective, the minute that school is down and teachers are out of that building, they are not going to have access to that building. So that site is going to be turned over, the construction team, as soon as school is over.
Thank you.
Certainly part of that work that first weekend is getting all of the classrooms at Monroe that are being remodeled, updated, you know, all that furniture has to come out. So it's going to take a few days for us to get the site prepped for the construction team. But as soon as that site is prepped, again, only a few days, I would imagine the beginning of the next week, right after, Joe and the team will be ready to go.
Yep. There's going to be a little time to creating that temporary staging parking area to the north. There is a great change. There's some building demolition that has to take place. But I just feel that's a good spot, kind of away from everything, limit disruption the best we can while we do the new addition.
I have a quick question on the parking lot that I know next summer. What are the improvements that are going to happen there? Is it just repave or is there changes in that lot?
I told you, you had to sit at the table, Michael. You might as well just bring your chair up.
Mike Doltor, senior project architect, Perkins Will. So the parking lot at Monroe is going to be expanded slightly to the south. We're also going to be addressing the stormwater, improving the stormwater area that's to the south of the parking lot between Manchester and the parking lot itself. So the concept is we're changing from the Engle parking that's there to 90 degree parking so that we can make up for any of the lost parking on the northwest corner.
Okay.
So the overall delta is going to be fairly similar to what it is right now at the end of the day. You'll have, and we'll get rid of, if you know, entering into Monroe, there's a little hump getting into that parking lot. That's part of the kind of surface stormwater management as it is right now. That goes away, has a flat level, new parking lot expanded slightly, more spaces out front, and then revised stormwater management system there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question? So the temporary parking, staging and parking area, is that Park District property?
All the way to the back is Park District. I think the football field, the turf field is us. I think when you get beyond that, it is Park District. So we've been working with the Park District on this. They're aware of it. I think the other thing, and again, we'll see where they go with it, but at the end of this, how we restore that may depend a little bit on the Park District's interest in that back part of the property as well. They've expressed some interest in improving that area. So part of restoration for us actually may be helping them with kind of getting that restoration to get it ready if they choose to do something different with the back of that property.
And there's no issues with setback with the parking lot being expanded?
We've been working with the city on, for zoning. We've had our initial, two reviews already on zoning for that. We're within, and we've also been going through engineering on this. We're in for stormwater review on the overall design, so we're ahead of the game on that. We don't think there's any issues with any of the setbacks. We haven't, we've gone by rights on all of the improvements around the building. So we think we're in good stead there.
Great, thank you.
We had a conversation on a couple of board committees, maybe the full board, was involved in about expanding that parking even more in the front, perhaps connecting it over to the little lot that is by the Park District's piece. We actually ran a couple of models on that, and I just don't think the delta of what we gain versus the cost to do that because of what will be additional stormwater requirements, it just wouldn't be worth it. It'd be too expensive for parking. So we did look at it. We circled back to the Park District because it was kind of a joint interest, and I think kind of all agreed it just would not be worth the cost associated.
And if the time comes that there are improvements in the north, we're going to have the access, the temporary access to get back there in place for our addition. So that can be utilized to do that improvement work as well in lieu of coming from the east through the residential area and/or through the fields coming off of Manchester. So if we have it in place, why not use it and kind of work our way back south? So I think that's a big win-win. All right. Edison. All right, we have a red arrow identifying construction flow and traffic. It'll be 100% overlap with that portion of the existing parking lot. Commencement for this addition would be spring of '26. So it's a six-month construction schedule. So we have about eight weeks or so of overlap with the end of the academic year next year. So for those eight weeks, we will make sure that we're able to reasonably coexist through that existing parking area. So I do not anticipate any issues with that. So traffic will come in south. Once again, we have our red line delineating the temporary construction fence. And similar to Monroe, restoration would take place in the fall of '26 and then open back up for use in spring of '27. So same phasing, same completion. Once again, we'll coordinate with the Park District as needed as well. The two ball fields to the east will stay usable throughout the entire project. So that'll be nice.
Just for clarity on both of them, the word says temp state, temp staging and parking, is that construction parking?
Yeah, so
That's not parking?
We will implement temporary aggregate, so stone, so.
But it's not parking for staff or visitors?
No, correct, construction. Yeah, the whole, the goal is to try, is to bring in construction vehicles and trucking and all of that as seamless as possible off of public roadways and parking lots without having to stack up and idle and all of that. So that's what we try to achieve.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Edison? All right. Franklin. So we have our, the only green space, I think, around that area to the west of the existing school here. That the plan is to implement that temp staging and parking. That red, that red rectangle might be reconfigured where we may take over the ball fields in lieu of that green space. That might work a little better for the staff and students there as far as, as far as what wants to be usable during the construction. So that might be modified a little bit where we shift over to the east and then they can come back around and use the west side of that. But in either scenario, we will be traversing back and forth from our temporary area over to the northeast addition. So again, that'll be a coordination piece. But other than that, it's pretty straightforward. It's tight quarters to the northeast, but it's adequate for the addition. It's just not adequate to house a whole lot of parking and staging materials that we'll need. We can't really shut down any streets or roadways or anything of that nature. So the green, the green field it is, and we'll try to minimize how much room we take up. And again, just kind of go back and forth on a daily basis from area to area.
Where is staff parking on this map?
Staff parks a couple of spots. Actually, about the only onsite parking is between the bottom ball field and the building. There's a small parking lot right there. And then there's currently a small parking lot where the addition is right now. That is going to go away. Otherwise, staff park either on the street or we have an agreement, we have an informal agreement that we're in the process of working to formalize with the church next door for one of their lots that gives us some staff parking as well.
My only comment on this, unique to this school, is just, you know, the walking traffic of contractors in the school and importance of security on that north side of Franklin is going to have to be kind of dialed in with the school.
Yep. Yep. All right. All right, global SD budget assessment. Which is the scrolling function on this? There we go. All right. All right, so this is, this is the overall recap. I'll take you through one of the detailed budget assessments after this, but this is the snapshot of each of the middle schools. Those are all-in values that you see, Monroe, Edison and Franklin to the right there. By all-in, that's the cost of construction. And then on top of that, the AE fees, owner costs, construction management fee structure, contingency, things of that nature, which we'll go through in a minute. This global SD budget assessment and the goal of this, this is the first major budget milestone since, I think I was here last, I believe it was in May of '24.
Can you explain for everybody what SD is?
Yes, yes. So that's schematic design. So it's early portion of the overall design phase. So last May, we established a baseline budget assessment is what we called it, and that was based on high-level design criteria. So square footage of new additions, square footage of different levels of renovation. That was presented to the board and an all-in structure as well. It's just that it wasn't a detailed assessment above the line, above all of these other factors that are all, that are contained within the all-in budget. So this was important just from the standpoint of we want to ensure that we're starting out in the appropriate position to maintain this budget. So schematic design, this was a detailed budget assessment as a result of that. You could see that this is based on a few things here. So SD's dated 12, 23, 24 for project issuance two and three. And then for project issuance one, those are DDs. So that's a little further in design for project issuance one. And then there's some additional ref plans that were issued as well. But all in all, it's SD global budget assessment just to ensure that we're tracking where we need to be. So we're at 151.9 million. It's actually slightly under 150 million based on some further budgeting that took place for project issuance one because that obviously is at the forefront. So we're actually out to bid with project issuance one. So we were able to refine the placeholder a little bit, which gets us below that 150 million. Let's see if we can scroll down a little bit there. So again, this is Monroe. It's broken down per trade, so it's very specific. We could keep working our way down towards the bottom here. So it's all separated per division, per scope of work. And then as we approach below the line, if you don't mind, you can keep scrolling. That'd be great. Okay. All right, so project issuance one, you'll see there's a placeholder of $8,556,793. That's based on the DD budget assessment. Before we go out to bid, we always complete a final control estimate. So that's sort of a soft bid opening to ensure that before we put a project out to bid, we know that it's going to meet budget expectations and that we won't have any bid day surprises. So that 8.5 actually was refined down to about 6.1 million. Okay, that was a product, a budget refinement and some modification of scope and creating some add alternates. Okay, so when 6.1 gets plugged in there and then everything below the line gets affected accordingly.
So Joe, that number's on the last page?
The Yes, yes.
Correct.
The final control estimate for project issuance one is within the packet as well. So that puts us at a starting point of just under 150 million all-in. So everything checks out. It's where we want to be. We still have a long way to go in the design. We're still going to continue preparing budget assessments along the way before we go out to bid just to make sure that we're tracking where we need to be. So just continuing through this budget assessment. So the hard cost of construction is the 48.6 million here at Monroe. There is a design contingency. So as the design is progressing, some unforeseen things that may be discovered during the design phase will be identified or confirmed, confirmed not applicable. So that value's eventually going to go away as the budget's progressing. We do have a construction contingency of 3.5% built in to this assessment. We have a 2% escalation placeholder. If you remember back in May, that escalation placeholder used to be around 4%. We're going to bid all the work in 2025. The majority of the work's going to be complete come August of '26 with renovation taking place in summer of '27, the balance of renovation. So the 2% escalation placeholder in all of these assessments is reasonable. Then we get into builder's risk placeholder, CM fee structure. And then we have AE fee, owner's costs, furniture, and that leads us to the all-in. So in this case on Monroe, we're at 63.8 million. So we did this for each middle school.
I mean, overall, good news, Mike. Concern going into a project like this is you've got 8.75% escalation and contingencies. I'd love to see that contingency a little bit higher at this point, but it's something we're going to have to monitor and make good decisions so we don't use. I'm preaching to the choir here, I know.
With regards to the construction contingency?
Yeah. I mean, I'm combining the two contingencies down the escalation, but the 3% construction, 3.5. It's probably a little lighter than we were, where I would assume you would like to see it.
Well, I mean, the cost, the construction contingency is for unforeseen conditions or owner added scope. So, but as the budget's progressing and as we get into more detailed budgets per project issuance, if that's something that we can increase to be more conservative, we certainly will. So. With regards to project issuances, as we mentioned, project issuance one, which is some miscellaneous renovation work, finished work at Monroe as well as enabling work at Monroe and Franklin. So that's work that will be summer critical in an effort to allow these additions to commence towards the end of summer '25 and to fall of '25. So without this work taking place, we would not be able to break ground and commence with these additions and turn them over in summer of '26. So this is critical, summer '25 work. That's what's currently out to bid. The bid opening is actually next week on Thursday. I expect great competitive bidding and we'll come back to you on March 12th, I believe it is, for board approval.
How many different bid packages you have?
There's three. So it's general trades and then mechanical and electrical. And then project issuance two, we broke up into two segments. So phase, we'll call it project issuance two A and then two B. So two A consists of the additions and associated site work. So two A will go out to bid in April with the bid opening in May. And then two B will go out to bid in May with an opening in June, which will work nicely. So as we're coming out of the summer, we'll have some time to, well, a couple of weeks to do submittals. And then we're going to break ground. But the timing should work out, should work out well, being able to transition right into the addition work. And then phase three or project issuance three, we don't want to say phase three. Project issuance three will be all the renovation work. So that out to bid is in October of '25 with a bid opening right before Triple I in November. So the backup plan, if things get pushed, that project issuance three would probably be maybe half of the renovation and maybe the other half can follow because that's going to be summer '27 work anyways. But I'm a firm believer in economies of scale and keeping things together to keep it as cost-effective as possible. But if we need to, for whatever reason, postpone X amount of renovation work at a later date, we certainly can.
So that all kind of works out to basically by the end of this year, pretty much everything will be under contract?
100% by Triple I.
Kind of in hindsight from, you know, a little over a year from referendum date, that's like amazing. Usually that, yeah. I think I've talked about how aggressive this schedule is, but to be under contract with all construction 13 months after a referendum is kudos to you.
Well, it would be amazing if I still have. But we'll be at approximately 60% CD, so that's construction documents by the end of next week on the majority of the work. So it's very important that we continue doing that detailed budgeting as the design is progressing so we can provide real feedback in real time to the design team and the district so we can make decisions and make sure that ultimately what we put out for bid meets everyone's expectations.
Take just a second on that too to recognize the, kind of the totality of the team that's making that happen. I know Joe and Michael are here representing this work. But in order to do that, Brad, to your point, there is a constant flow of, Michael's got a big team working with him at Perkins and Will. I think every week we get a list of, hey, here are three more meetings. We've got a schedule to continue to get user input as we're kind of in the last phases of design. So this certainly, while the board has heard updates kind of scattered over time, like there is a massive team that's working incredibly hard but incredibly well together to kind of make all this happen and come together on the timeline that it is, so.
And a lot of consultants for Perkins as well that we don't even hear about. That's right.
Questions, feedback?
Joe, do you want to just mention real quick, if we can scroll down to the last one? Do you just want to mention with that first bid package, highlight a couple of the alternates just to kind of show that, that concept? Because I think we're going to probably continue to use that strategy where appropriate.
This would be the blue budget assessment if you keep going here. Couple more pages. There we go at the bottom.
Little too far. There we go. Perfect.
A little more. All right, so at the time of this final control estimate, we're still finalizing a few alternates. So where we're at now is we have five alternates within our bid form. Alternate one and two, those will be the natural light options. So it'll be the skylights as alternate one or solar tubes for alternate number two. So that'll allow a little bit of flexibility with those particular options. The other alternates are human-centric lighting would be alternate three. And then we just added four and five for an alternate type of lay-in light fixture. And then the associated human-centric lighting for those alternate fixtures. So those are the five alternates. That bid day flexibility is good to have where it's not just all or nothing in the base bid, so.
Mike, can you give just 30 seconds on human-centric lighting? Because I still don't know that I understand it. So maybe I'll get after this one.
Yeah, absolutely. So the concept of human-centric lighting is using the, you know, natural light changes color temperature over the day. So it's more toward, shifted towards the blue in the mornings and towards the yellows in the afternoons. And that, that sets your sort of natural rhythm. And that's kind of a healthy way to continue working it. So we're looking at seeing, what is the cost of that if we were to implement a system that does that? Where the light isn't just a constant color throughout the day, it changes. It changes with the clock. So, it works with your biology a little bit better. And it's been, there's studies that have shown that it has a good impact on student performance and student wellness. I know that there's tests in the two classrooms that we're working on in Monroe have the furniture installed in them. They're also going to have that human-centric lighting as a test in there just to see if that really makes sense. But we included that in here just to see, you know, what is the cost so you can weigh out the benefits to that?
Relative to the benefits, is there research out there that suggests that this actually drives performance improvements, wellness improvements, anything of the sort?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can, I think you will find research out there that shows the benefits of it. I think from, you know, when we mimic natural light and the natural functions of that, it's, there is a benefit. You know, to how deep it has been studied, I don't know personally the, how deep that is. I know that there are studies out there that are, that have looked at it and how it affects it positively. We can, we can highlight those and reach out to that. Again, that's, we're looking at it as a, to try to continue to dive into that so we understand for you what the best approach to that is, so.
Is that across all of the schools or just the 18 classrooms at Monroe that have no...
The 30-something classrooms at Monroe right now, that's where we have it right now. So, that'll give us a good baseline understanding of what the cost impact would be on that. We're also, as Joe indicated, we have four lighting-based alternates. Some of those are, you know, altering the fixture type and then the controls type within that. So, that gives you, again, a good flexibility to see where you want to be overall for that.
Probably not a lot of research around that type of lighting in rooms with no windows as opposed to, you know, regular classroom lighting versus human-centric lighting.
Sure.
So, we're working from a very low baseline.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely true. And, you know, that, that's one of the reasons why we're interested in it, especially when we look at either having skylights or the solar tubes in those spaces. You know, something that can work on those. If you're a teacher that's in those classrooms all day long, you know, this can really help, help reset your rhythm versus being in, you know, an enclosed box all day, so.
If we're able to do any of that, it'd be a pretty interesting research studies at the end of this project, like feelings of students and teachers before versus after.
Yeah, we agree. We thought the same thing where we would, where, because we've already started that kind of pre-occupancy study surveys with furniture that went out in Monroe to see opinions on that, that we could implement the same thing if that, if that's the direction that the school went. But I think that either with natural light, the skylighting or with the human-centric or a combination of both, we could, we could certainly see, you know, what are the benefits that come from that in the short term as well.
Joe, any, this aggressive schedule, any concerns specifically about delivery, lead times, equipment?
No, no, not at this time.
Um, I'm sorry.
Yes.
One more question about the human-centric lighting. So, it sounds like it's a relatively new concept, or has it been?
I wouldn't say that it's a, it's a, it's not, it's not super new. It's not, you're not a first implementer of that. There are a lot of, a lot of options that are out there that use that. You know, I've seen that in one-off spaces where it's been implemented in a number of areas. Then in the corporate world, there's been a number of case studies on how that's been done. We're looking for, you know, close, close by installations in a school atmosphere. In this area, you're not, we're not finding a lot. But it's not to say that it hasn't been done. We've provided, we have some examples of that. So, again, we'll continue to do the dive onto the researched impacts of that so that you can understand it.
And my question being, so there would be data available as to what the ongoing costs and maintenance of that system is?
Yes, yeah. And I mean, it's an LED system. So, the LEDs are, you know, in this case, they, they are inherently dimmable and they have the color change built into them. You have a, instead of a single color LED down the strip, you have a few different ones that form the different colors within there. So, it's the same, that same technology that's built there. So, there's nothing, there's nothing really super unique about how that is done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The 2% escalation, you know, the explanation of the fact that we're, I guess, moving this quickly, I get that, maybe reducing the risk in terms of limiting our exposure to inflation. But in terms of any tariff risk in the current environment, is that covered by that as well? Is that risk borne elsewhere? Or are we just not thinking that anything involved in this project is going to be materially impacted by tariff activity?
I don't anticipate it, but I mean, one of the reasons we do the thorough budget assessment is if there is going to be an impact and we're, and if we are going to feel it, then we'll know about it before we go out to bid. And then we can adjust or pivot or have a conversation to see if we need to go another direction. But until, until that becomes, until I verify that, I'm not anticipating it.
Thank you.
And then with regards to the lead times, project issuance one, for example, if there's an opportunity to do a pre-purchase or to expedite an order for mechanical equipment or whatnot, we certainly are proactive in doing that. We did that for project issuance one on a few rooftop units. So, those will be, those will be local here in the next month or so, well before we need them in the summer. Even though lead times are better than they used to be coming out of the pandemic, it's still, in my opinion, good to be conservative. I'd rather have something in an insured warehouse sitting, ready to go than hoping the lead time we were given holds true, so. So, the, the order was placed via district commitment letter, but the actual scope and responsibility is within the mechanical bid package that's currently out to bid. So, when they submit their bids next week, they're carrying this value and they're ultimately responsible for everything. So, it takes, it lowers the risk drastically from the district having to coordinate that delivery and all of that, so. So, the formal PO will come from the low responsible mechanical contractor. It works out nice.
It also established a uniform cost.
Yes.
Across the board too, that was known upfront and is borne by anybody across the board. So, there's, we know if there's going to, any movement and what that breakout cost is, it's people aren't adhering to the pit specs.
Basically, put an allowance in the mechanical contract to include the cost of that, those units?
Yep, we, we identify the value for that equipment, so. And then as the design progresses for the, for the rest of the work, we'll certainly look at doing something similar, so TBD.
Any other questions on those two items for tonight, logistics or budget?
It's a good update, thank you.
Just a comment, kind of to your point about the, where we're going to be in a year. I mean, it's evident, like, this is a lot of progress just from a few weeks ago. So, appreciate all the effort and diligence. It's helpful and exciting.
You're welcome, yep, it is exciting.
I believe just the next two, so you're, you should be in March taking action on issuance one, bid package one. We have scheduled for April and talking to Michael as we get obviously closer to that second bid package, a design update just so you see some of the detail and design on kind of the last two components. So, you're going to have a, continue to have a regular cadence of updates here as we move through the spring.
Great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, the second topic on the agenda is Vision 2026 Learning Acceleration Update on Multi-Tierred Systems of Support for Literacy. Dr. Schuler, please introduce and share any additional information from staff.
All right. I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Murphy for this. So, she's got an update to the board on, obviously, some items that were part of your work plan for this year, kind of bringing that work forward. We've also, we're joined this evening by a couple of our phenomenal reading coaches. We have talked to the board and to the community so many times about the vital role that our coaches have played in helping to support both tier one, curricular implementation opportunities, and then some of the tier two, three intervention opportunities that we're going to talk about. So, Mrs. Murphy, I'm going to hand it right over to you.
Yeah, good evening, thank you, Dr. Schuler. So, it's absolutely a pleasure to have a chance to continue talking to you about the work we've been doing with learning acceleration. Tonight's focus is really a continuation of the presentation that I gave to you in September about multi-tiered systems of support. But this time, it's a deeper dive into literacy specifically. And I am joined tonight by two fantastic educators here. Lisa Tomac is right, sitting right next to me. She is a reading coach at Madison. And Nancy Nicholson is the reading coach at Longfellow. I think they'll be probably the best part of the presentation this evening. They will give you very specific information about what this looks like in our classrooms and the work that they are doing with our students. So, I'm starting with this image. This came from our EAB research study that really launched us into all of the work that we started doing with literacy. That study was called Narrowing the Third Grade Reading Gap. And this image right here really shows you that the research says that 95% of elementary students can learn to read with the right instruction. But the way they get there is all different. So, 30% of students can learn no matter the environment. 50% of students need a highly effective tier one learning environment. We're going to spend a lot of time talking about that tonight. And then 15% of students need additional time and support. That will also be a focus of our conversation. And then 5% of students struggle with severe cognitive impairments. The purpose for tonight is really to provide the board and our community with a comprehensive informational look at the work that we have been doing with multi-tiered systems of support and literacy. So, we have five different topics that we are going to address this evening. First being just the reading process. Learning to read is really complicated and there's a science behind it. So, we're going to give you a little insight on that. Second, we're going to address dyslexia. I know that this was a specific request from the board. And so, we're going to give you a high-level overview so that you have some more information about dyslexia. And within the presentation, we'll also talk about the interventions and instruction we have in place to support students. We are going to be talking about elementary reading instruction and the work that we have done with learning acceleration in your work plan. I'm going to give you a preview of some of the work at middle school that really builds off of the foundation we've set at elementary. And then finally, we're always thinking about what else we can be doing. So, we've identified some next steps for our work. So, tonight, four guiding questions for the presentation. And I'm going to start with, how does science inform learning to read? So, this is called Scarborough's Reading Rope. I have shown this to the Board of Education before. Our staff have seen this image multiple times. We really like this because it really does demonstrate the complexities of learning to read. There are so many different components and learning to read isn't something that we all do naturally. We do need to be taught. And so, this image is divided into two different strands. So, the blue strand is all about language comprehension and the green strands are about word recognition. At first, all of those strands are separate. But then as students gain more skills, they become entwined and they become more fluent and automatic readers. And it results in reading comprehension. If any of those pieces of the rope are weak, then students have difficulty. Recently, we have learned about brain science that has talked to, like, has shown us what is important for students as they are learning to read. And so, the brain research has revealed that reading doesn't rely on a single region of the brain. But during that process, four lobes work together. So, the visual cortex recognizes printed letters and words. The auditory cortex builds oral word understanding. The angular gyrus associates letters and sounds. And the frontal lobe produces speech and processes meaning. This image here actually comes from the Illinois Dyslexia Handbook that was published recently. And it gives a very good image of how those different lobes work together. So, the one image is of a typical reader where those four lobes are all working together and the pathways between those four lobes are strong. Compare that with the image of a reader with dyslexia. A reader with dyslexia is not always using all four lobes and those pathways may not all be developed. But we do know that with the right instruction, the brain can change and those lobes and pathways can get stronger. So, I did want to give you an official definition of dyslexia. This comes from the Illinois Dyslexia Handbook. This is what Illinois has adopted as the official definition. I bolded a few key words here for you. It is a learning disability that is neurological in origin, that is a deficit in phonological component of language. And then, so that has to do with that green part of the rope. But over time, there can be complexities and challenges with reading comprehension, which is the ultimate goal, and it can impede vocabulary and background knowledge growth. So, here's some characteristics of dyslexia. So, there are three types of deficits. There can be a phonological core deficit, a naming speed deficit, or a combination. I think what's really important for you to know about this is dyslexia can be on a continuum. It can be very mild or it can be severe. And then, this is also very important, not all students that have dyslexia will qualify for special education. But they are likely to have specific areas that they are going to need supports within the school from. Dyslexia isn't the only reason students struggle to learn how to read. There are others, and I've listed some of those here. These, so, again, going back to that idea, learning to read is very complex. And the job that the lady sitting next to me and all of our teachers are doing is challenging because we're trying to determine all the ways to meet the needs of our different students. So, what is evidence-based instruction and how is it evident in our classrooms? So, as a reminder, multi-tiered systems of support are a framework for school improvement. These involve three different tiers. The first tier is called tier one. Every student receives tier one instruction. And this is intended to meet 80% of students' needs. So, 80% of students in a school should have their needs and learn how to read within a tier one environment. I think it's really important when we are having this conversation about literacy to actually start with tier one because that is where our students spend a majority of their school day. So, when we think about an elementary student's school day, their instruction is divided up into several blocks. They have a 45-minute block that's called shared reading. They have a 45-minute block that's called ELA. And students are all present during that time. So, students do not leave the classroom to get other interventions. We have something called a differentiated instruction block. That's 45 minutes as well. But this is where students may leave for a variety of reasons. One could be an intervention, another could be pace. There's lots of reasons students are going other places during that time for 30 minutes. And then another 15 minutes, they're back in their classroom. What is important to know is explicit, intensive, systematic instruction and sound structure of language and how it relates to the level. of language and how it relates to the letters is needed for our readers with dyslexia. This instruction has to be in Tier One first. So, one thing that we've been doing here this year is not just implementing Bookworms, but we've also been partnering with Dr. Jamie Trudaly. She comes from the University of Delaware. That's where Bookworms was created, and she is an expert in special education. And what she has done, as she has used research on what makes a highly effective differentiated classroom, and she has been training our staff, and we have purchased her materials so that we can implement and support our students that need, you know, a highly differentiated environment. They need their needs met during core instruction. And this is where our FastBridge data comes into play too. Our classrooms where we see less than 80% of students meet that 30th percentile on FastBridge, then we're seeing as, like, those classrooms need to absolutely be implementing the enhanced core reading instruction. So, this is where I'm going to turn over to Nancy and Lisa, and they are going to tell you really what this looks like in our classrooms in Tier One.
So, just to talk about our past ELA instruction before Bookworms, we were doing all the components of ELA, but the instructional strategies and materials varied by building and grade level. So, now that we have Bookworms with all the components and the materials similar. Oh, am I not there? Thank you, thank you. Because I can't hear myself. But, we have all our components together. They're the same throughout the district, and all of it is taught in a systematic, explicit manner. Every day, the students are receiving grade-level instruction and an opportunity to be met at their needs every day in this curriculum. So, how this works for foundational skills specifically. In that shared reading block is the part of the day where the whole group instruction for the foundational skills happens. All students are present for that and is starting our shared reading piece. And then, at the differentiated instruction, which I might say DI because that's the acronym we use a lot, is where we are able to teach students and target their needs. So, the great piece of this is we have what we call the stairway to proficiency, and it is something that is systematic, explicit, and the students are assessed by their teachers. And then, as a result, where they land in that stair step, then they are instructed three to four weeks, and then after that, they're once again assessed by their teachers, and they're either moved up to the next step if they have fluently and automatically secured those skills, or they go back to repeat and we, once again, then reassess. So, we're always progressing, I mean, monitoring their progress amongst these steps. In addition, this piece of paper that was...
In your green folders, actually.
Oh, in the green folder.
Yep, in your green folders, there is a document that is titled CUSD 200 First Grade Progress Report, Foundational Skills.
So, this is sent home every trimester with the report card, letting parents know exactly the stair step that their child is on and where they're going, so they can see the continuum starting in kindergarten. You can see the expectations of kindergarten, then of first grade, and that by the end of second grade, we expect on-grade level reading of a second-grade text with comprehension. That's our expectation there. So, when we go back and we look at that Scarborough's Reading Rope, K-1, 2 spins a lot of time on that green part, but at the same time, Bookworms is not ignoring any of those blue parts. We are simultaneously looking at vocabulary, language comprehension, background knowledge. So, it's not taught completely in isolation, but we do have a time to work at their needs.
So, in grades three through five...
Thanks, we're not used to this.
Yes, I know.
New partner, I know. So, in grades three through five, to piggyback off of what Nancy was saying, all components of ELA were included in the curriculum, but the instructional strategies and materials really varied between buildings and grade levels. But with Bookworms, it includes all of our components and materials for ELA curriculum, and they are taught in a systematic, explicit manner, and daily instruction is at grade level. So, it's differentiated to meet all of the needs of all of the students. One of the shifts that we have is explicit vocabulary and phonics instruction in three through five, and you have this in your packet also, so you might want to take a look at that, because I'm going to kind of take you through how this works. So, at Tier One, what Melissa was talking about, all students have access to this in grades three through five. So, if you look, it goes through a series of vocabulary words, and underneath, all of those vocabulary words are broken into syllables, and those syllable types are identified. So, when Nancy was showing you the stair steps that are going through and showing, maybe they were going through vowel teams or R-controlled words, you might see under these words, some of those syllables are R-controlled or they're vowel teams. So, the students have been taught in K-2, all of this terminology, so that it can be carried up into the upper grades. They have the part of speech that's identified. They have, in the next section, it gives the definition, and then in the next part, it gives a quick excerpt of that word being used in context rather than in isolation, and it also gives the page number in the book where the students can go back to that and read it in context and read the full page of it. So, there's a lot that can go on here in Tier One besides going through the vocabulary, the syllabication. These words are also the words that the students will be using for spelling assessment, so that syllabication comes in really great for not only decoding but also encoding, which would be writing their words out.
And I'm just going to add in here really quickly. The images you're seeing right here in these materials, these are actually what we have purchased from Dr. Jamie Trudaly with her Enhanced Core materials and what we got trained on. So, these are enhancements to Bookworms that really apply research that helps students in a differentiated manner. So, I really just wanted to highlight that change that we are able to implement.
Well, this particular cart too is from A Strong Right Arm, which is a fourth-grade novel. And then, down at the bottom, there's an example of the Enhanced Core slides. All of the books have a slide deck that comes along with it. So, these words are broken into syllables for them. There's a lot of picture support for the vocabulary, so there's some really strong support for Tier One and all students. And then, we go back to Scarborough's Reading Rope, where Nancy was talking about the green section for the primary grades, K-2. The three-through-five students hopefully have mastered those skills and are now more focused on language comprehension with an emphasis on their vocabulary. So, we're moving through the rope. Everything's done simultaneously still, but there's a shift then from the phonological awareness and phonics into that comp and vocab.
But, it is reinforced all the time with those syllabic words.
Absolutely.
Of all the times.
Which...
Melissa, can I just ask one question before you move on to middle school? So, as you laid out really that schedule and how and when students are receiving instruction in those blocks, I would assume it becomes important kind of by grade level for the purpose of coordinating those resources for intervention and the like for a grade level to have a blocked schedule that allows for all students, third grade, at a building to kind of be in that instructional block at the same time?
Absolutely.
And I don't think that was always the case either, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I mentioned that to the board because that concept will not come up later tonight, but as we start to talk about technology deployment moving forward, we're going to come back to that concept.
Okay, so, I will talk a little bit about middle school. So, just as important Tier One is in elementary, it is in middle school too. And as a reminder, students are in an ELA block for 90 minutes, and science and social studies actually have literacy standards too. And so, there is some literacy instruction happening in those two areas. If students go to an intervention, it's in one of their 45-minute blocks, and that's actually in replacement of an elective. This is kind of a different way to look at that Scarborough's Reading Rope. This actually comes from the Illinois Dyslexia Handbook as well. I really like this image because it shows specifically what should be a focus at the secondary level when we think about like 612. And so, no longer are we really talking about the green parts of that rope being included in Tier One. The idea is that students have mastered those green parts, and if they haven't, that's where it moves into an intervention. But, at middle school and high school, the primary focus in a Tier One setting is reading comprehension and vocabulary instruction. If you need support with fluency, multi-syllabic word reading, which actually right here, this is multi-syllabic word reading, or foundational word skills, those things have to happen in an intervention. I think this is a good opportunity just to highlight, we, the board approved new common instructional materials for middle school ELA at your last meeting, and having common materials makes it much more powerful. We are able to say with confidence that vocabulary instruction and reading comprehension are happening in certain ways in the classroom, because those materials lay out how that instruction happens. And so, these two boxes just highlight some of the ways that vocabulary instruction and reading comprehension are going to come alive with those new My Perspective materials. And I think the other point I want to highlight here is that common materials allow for common professional learning and collaboration. So, that's certainly a benefit for our students and staff. Okay, so that was, we were really concentrated there on what all students receive. Now, we're going to talk about what it looks like if students need some additional supports.
Sorry, would it be okay if I ask a couple of questions before we move into the additional supports?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, after the initial maybe growing pains with the elementary level, I've heard generally positive feedback from staff, students, parents, but I'm sure there's been opportunity areas that have bubbled up. Can you share anything that's maybe been identified as areas of key improvement for the future?
Well, I think one of the things that we have done is Jamie Daly, who is working with us in the Enhanced Core slides, really, she has, she comes from the research of using like the verbal cues, the restating, the coral response. So, all teachers have that piece, which has filled some things in that all students are getting at those pieces and the need for those visual cues that are the same. So, I truly feel like what we're doing this year is really filling a lot of the holes, and the teachers are really excited about it. They feel very comfortable with some of those holes.
I think too, that's something that's really important that we're seeing is the teachers are really excited about the cohesiveness of it. So, as we're seeing grade levels come up, all of these students have had exposure to the same materials. They've had exposure to the same background information. So, for example, in second grade, we have students reading a book about Jackie Robinson, and in fourth grade, you saw A Strong Right Arm. So, they have some background in baseball from a book that they read in second grade. So, the more that these students are going through this Bookworms program, the more we'll see this cohesiveness in their education and then what they're coming up to the next grade level with.
Thank you. And then, one critique I've heard from a couple of staff and parents is that Bookworms has tilted us a little more towards nonfiction, and I'm sure there's some benefits to that. But, one thing that, you know, I've heard brought up as a possible concern is, you know, do the students find that as engaging? Are they getting the same love of reading, given that obviously frequency and duration of reading can also link to proficiency? And I don't know if that's something that we measure in any sort of way is, you know, whether that enjoyment of reading or the desire to read more both within and outside of school is being affected by this change in instructional materials.
I'll start, and then you guys add on. So, when I have, I can't say with absolute certainty, but the design of Bookworms is to have a balance between fiction and nonfiction. So, I can't say at every single grade level, there's an actual 50/50 split, but over the course of time for a student's experience through K-5, there is. I would also say, we learned this from Dr. Daly, was the intent of the nonfiction is also to help prepare students for the heavy informational reading that they are going to be doing at high school. And some of the books, I'm going to be honest, when I spent like the whole summer before putting labels and stickers on them, there were these books called Plant and Animal Cells, and I think we all were kind of like, oh, gosh, those look like they're going to be like, not so riveting. But, the, but those, I mean, some kids really have really enjoyed those. But, they are, they look like a elementary version of what a science textbook looks like further on, and that's the design and intentional intent that goes with that. So, that...
I did actually hear a story that was where someone said, wow, if they're learning that and we're learning this in high school, that's really good.
Yeah, I think it was one of our reading coaches who...
Yeah, it was me.
It was you, it was you, Nancy, yeah!
It was me. My daughter, I think I'm at home doing the work, and she like picked up the book and planted it, so she's like, oh my gosh, they're going to know all about biology by the time they get there. So, and I will attest, I've been in the rooms with the fifth graders reading these books, and I too thought it was a very interesting subject, but they love it. They really do. And some of that just comes on to us for learning things in our attitude towards it. And I will also say, I do feel like there is a balance. There's good balances of fiction and nonfiction at all the grade levels, I feel. And the kids, when they have read certain series, like let's say Ivy and Bean, which is more of a second-grade series, they are mad rushing at the library and getting all those out, and Henry and Mudge, and these kids are excited to take these books out. So, I do feel like it does engage and encourage in a way that I hadn't seen so much connection before.
We also did a survey at the end of last year, and we asked students what their favorite books were. A lot of the literature books were the favorites. Yeah, so...
Thank you very much.
I have a follow-up question, Eric. Nancy, you mentioned visual cues. When is that, like, what does that look like?
So, even on that slide that showed just the vocabulary slide right there, the fact that the word is coming down and they're showing what syllable it is and what type of syllable it is, that's all a verbal, I mean, a visual cue. And they have pictures, and then they have like the Bookworms little mascot, he's a worm. He's a worm. And, but then they, from kindergarten to fifth grade, there's the what guy, the why guy, the why worm, and so that visual cue stays the same, which is another way it spirals and helps our students as they go through and see the same visual cues.
Great, thank you for explaining that. I think I was envisioning the early readers where there's visual cue to decode the word. Is that...
No, it's just, it's the...
It's more the visual...
It's like an image, actually.
Okay. And I'm curious, since we have you here, so one of my concerns has been for over a decade, with the advent of Common Core back in 2008 to 2013, I think, or 2010 to 2013, that kindergarten became the new first grade, like first grade standards kind of came down to kindergarten. And I'm curious if that has caused issues, because I feel it's developmentally inappropriate to like bring some of those standards down, but it feels like we're still there. Is that accurate? Or, like, we're still there kind of having expectations on kindergartens that reduce the focus on play-based learning?
Mm-hmm. I, do you want me to...
And it can be, you know, I was just, like, we have you here, I'm curious what you think.
So, looking at the stair steps, you probably saw those things, and that might make you think about that. I feel like, as much as I hear what you're saying, because I would have said that 10 years ago too, I do feel like the kindergartners have adjusted and that they see the use of this, and it goes so slowly that it's building such a solid foundation that when they go to first grade, they're ready to go. I don't feel like it's as of a push, because the philosophy of the staircase is you need to be fluent, you need to know it. It's just not, do you know your sounds? Can you say "yeah"? It's, you need to say them with some efficiency, so I feel like that keeps...
Some automaticity.
Automaticity. That keeps everyone at that same level, so if they're not ready... Automaticity, that keeps everyone at that same level, so if they're not ready developmentally, we're still working on that piece to get faster, and we're not pushing to the spot where they're not at.
You know, Nancy, when you were speaking, it brought me back to some of the conversations that we had as a reading team. When we were first implementing Bookworms in kindergarten, we were hearing from our kindergarten staff that they actually thought it moved way too slow. And we were, they wanted to move faster than it had laid out. And that whole first year, I had the pleasure of being a part of a cohort that met with the author of Bookworms on a monthly basis, and I asked this question, and I loved her response. Her response was, we don't expect every single student who walks in the door to already have everything for kindergarten. We are giving them what they need because they are at the starting line. And so, over time though, our kindergarten staff got to the end of the year, and they saw that that actual slower progression was good. And so, I think we have been going slower than we had been when we first started working with Common Core, if that...
That's good to hear, because I think if you don't...
And I think it's building a stronger foundation.
And that's exactly what, I agree, going at that slower, a little bit slower pace.
Yeah.
Builds that strong foundation. If you don't have that strong foundation, you're not going to...
Exactly.
Good, thank you.
So, this question might be a few years too early, but can we go back a couple slides to the middle school Tier One instruction? That one right there.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, so, when I was reading this, I was thinking, so this is a data question. Will we have the ability to, as K through five students go through the process and get Tier Three and Tier Two supports, to be able to measure as they get into middle school, the number of students that will be able to kind of stay in the Tier One and not require other interventions? I know, we're just kind of getting into this new, I don't know what I'm asking, but...
You're asking such a good question. So, that's going to tie in when we get later into this presentation, when we talk about universal screeners. And so, that's FastBridge. And you may remember back in September, I gave a presentation where I was showing you data, and it was broken down in columns by green and red and yellow, and that's exactly to answer the question that you have, Brad. It was all about me saying, hey, as we've gotten to know FastBridge better, we actually need to look at the data this way, because it shows us what percentage of our students are able to learn in a Tier One environment and not need other supports, what probably need a Tier Two, and what need the most intensive Tier Three. So, we actually have that information now, and Nancy and Lisa can probably quickly speak to, like, you look at that at a school system, if you want to just say, like, what does that actually look like?
Before you say that, just to be clear, we're not reporting the data that way on our dashboard. I think, Brad, what you're actually asking for us to do is to reconsider reporting the data in a little different way that we talked about in the fall. Brad, I'm saying, I think I want you to say, we should really consider reporting the data in a slightly different way than the way that we talked about in the fall.
I was just going to add something, but he just said it. Well, I mean, the data can be reported, but it's also more important that it informs our own actions.
Right. So, that's where they really, they're the boots on the ground. You should just quickly say, like, how do you look at that?
We meet with teachers at each time, the fall benchmark, the winter benchmark, and even the spring benchmark, because we still have to understand that our instruction changed all the way through. And we talk about who is at certain percentiles and what we need to do, and who has made growth, who is not making enough growth, and that is even in your kids that are maybe at the 70th percentile, we have a way to look at that in our data to say, oh, they didn't make enough growth even at where they're sitting. So, we are constantly looking at that data, and then...
And the growth percentiles.
Mm-hmm, and the growth percentiles as we work through.
And it changes what you do and your own schedule too, because you all will maybe go into different classrooms to support the whole class, because the data is demonstrating there's a Tier One need there, right?
Mm-hmm. So, if we have a class that maybe, like, 60% at 80, their students 80%, or 60%...
60% of students at the 30th percentile, yeah, tongue twister.
And then, that's where we go in, and we create more of this, of a small group with us in the room situation, we're targeting groups of students. And the great thing about Jamie Daly's thing that we have gotten with the Enhanced Core is she has a total flow of, if your students can do this in their words per minute, then you need to decrease that and then increase that. So, we're using our data and that great guidance that she's providing us too.
Right. The important thing to remember is that we're changing how we're instructing, maybe we'll do a parallel, maybe one instructor will teach the same thing, but we may go at a slower pace, but we're not changing the materials. The materials are always the same, we're just changing the instructional method for that.
Just kind of to close the data question, what would be really interesting is if you could kind of identify those students as they go through K5 that still require interventions? Is there some kind of characteristic that they get early childhood support? You know, are they come from different kind of backgrounds? Are they EL students?
We do, yeah. We try to figure out why. If it's a student that is not making progress, we go through every avenue to find out what could be causing that, and then how we can find a solution to correct that. Yeah, thank you for that, that's a good question.
It is a good question.
So, speaking of assessments and screeners, the International Dyslexia Association does say you, school districts have to have a screener. And that screener, they said, has to be brief, it has to sort students, so it has to show who needs an intervention and who doesn't, and then it has to focus on specific skills. That's FastBridge for us, and it meets all of those criterias. We are actually using FastBridge, and all the way, we started trying this out at early childhood this year, we're piloting it there this year, but we use it all the way through eighth grade. And there are, these are the specific assessments and how they look as you move across the grade levels. And so, at the early reading level, it's a lot of those parts of the green rope that are assessed, and as students move forward, we are continuing to assess their word recognition, but at higher levels. So, I put the image of the reading rope there, because really, those components are assessed as a part of FastBridge.
Do we know if that screener is deemed to be effective for folks who are speaking English as a second language?
I would say that almost no assessments are designed for multilingual learners that are on the market. So, this is a conversation that we have been having. We, Dr. Pueyo has been running this committee, it's the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support for Multilingual Learners, and we've been working with an expert over there, and she's having conversations with us about how do we use the FastBridge data and compare multilinguals to their true peers? And how do we also use the access data and pair that with FastBridge to make more informed decisions about multilingual learners? It doesn't mean we throw it out for multilingual learners, it just means we have to go a little bit deeper and be more thoughtful when we look at that assessment data.
Thank you. Your answer is actually even richer than I was looking for, because I was thinking very specifically of, as much difficulty as we might have identifying students with dyslexia when they're English language speakers, are we missing identifying those students within the multilingual population? But I think what you described is even a broader look, and so, thank you for that.
We actually were just working on that this week, so that's why I was able to answer it so well. So, this is really important. Screening, I get this question all the time, I, from parents, I get the question, if you administer FastBridge, are you able to tell us if my student has dyslexia? No, I cannot. Screening tells us if a student is at risk. We say it's like a red flag, it puts a red flag up that they may be at risk, and we need to intervene. And those interventions can be multiple paths. It can be an intervention that Lisa and Nancy will speak to, it may be special education services, or maybe a 504 if they have dyslexia. We've talked about the 30th percentile a lot, that's kind of the line where we start to say, if a student is below the 30th percentile, we need to maybe consider them for an intervention, but we look at multiple data points. So, the other parts of the triangle are Tier Two, which is interventions, it should service about 5 to 15% of your school population, and Tier Three is the most intensive, with, ideally, it's only serving 1 to 5% of your school population. In a moment, I'm going to turn to Nancy and Lisa to specifically talk about intervention, but just a little background for you, it is in what we call the DI block, it's for 30 minutes. Reading specialists or special education staff may deliver an intervention. And we are very fortunate that the board has provided us with the opportunity to have so many FTE at these elementary grade levels to support this work. So, there are 33 reading specialists that sit across the 13 buildings. Some of those are funded through Title One, so seven of those are Title One funded. Of the reading FTE, we do designate one person to be a coach, these two are in that position, but they also see students in an intervention too. This is, this is...
Melissa, if I could just back up a step?
Yeah.
I think we talked about this earlier, but the question is, is that 30% number before we get seriously interested in them, is that too low?
That is considered able to learn in a Tier One environment. I'm really glad you asked this question. So, there is a large range between able to learn in the Tier One environment, so we have kids who are sitting there at the 30th percentile, we have kids sitting there at the 99th percentile. This is where, what the ladies were talking about before, with we have to really put a lot of materials in place to support students in Tier One. But, if we were to raise that, we'd have so many students sitting in interventions, and that's actually what research says is 30th percentile, that's what FastBridge drives us to.
Thank you.
This is just an image that comes from our partner, Dr. Daly, and the, what we are working with her on. She's developed a system that is very different than what we've ever done before, and is very exciting. We have Tier One, that's Bookworms, but now we have Tier Two and Tier Three that all connect to Bookworms. And so, it's cohesive, it makes sense for kids. No longer do we have kids going to the intervention room and doing something totally different. It is all cohesive and connected and supports one another, and they're going to give you a picture of that here.
So, our past reading intervention definitely addressed the foundational skills at a K2 spot, we were covering those. But, most of the time, the classroom materials that we were using in intervention weren't related to what the classroom was doing. And now with Bookworms, since we are in a targeted and systematic place that's explicit, we are able to get the students' needs directed right at their foundational skill level. We get to monitor them every three to four weeks in that intervention time. And it is what they see in the classroom, and sometimes they come to see, Lisa or I will work with a group of students that's all at that skill level, and then the next time, it'll be another classroom teacher. And we mix all groups of kids as they move through these skill places, and the kids will come in sometimes, they'll be like, ah, this is exactly what I'm doing in my classroom. And they're, and that connection is a super powerful connection that we have not had before, and as a reading specialist coach, it's been very powerful. It's, the students have made great success with it. I really feel that way. So, we still use, that's the exact same stair steps, so that's how we interchange with teacher, ourselves. We do do the 15-minute, every student gets 15-minute of the skill level. If you are doing intervention, you get another 15 minutes with the readings, teacher or specialist. And in that time, we're reinforcing the same skill, so we're not trying to teach vowel themes when we're working on our control, we're staying with that skill, we're reading more passages, rereading, and if we need to bring in some different decodables or different ways to access that too, sometimes we need more manipulatives because kids are different in the way they learn. So...
Same thing with three through five, I'll piggyback on what Nancy was saying too. When we had intervention before, it included all aspects of reading, but the instructional strategies and material were not really related to what the students were doing in class. So, for an example, if I, the kids were doing a Strong Right Arm in fourth grade, they might come to reading intervention and start reading about butterflies. It wasn't well-connected, it didn't mean that it was poor, they were getting a great experience in that way, but in this program, it's so much more connected. So, to give you an example of what reading support looks like in fourth grade, when I have students come down, and if they were using this, the Strong Right Arm, they were reading that novel, they would bring their novel down, they would bring down their response card with them. They have Bookworms workbooks or pages that they are working on. One of the things that they work on is called a super sentence, I don't know if you've heard about that before, but a super sentence is something where a student takes a vocabulary word, and they're showing their knowledge of what that word means through explaining it that way. So, that's one thing that they do. Another thing that they do is they write a short response on whatever they've written or read in the, in the classroom that day. So, in our group, we may be rereading that and discussing it a little bit further, and a lot of the times, the kids that have difficulty with reading are very reluctant to write, they can't, they don't know where to start, they don't want to share with anybody. And that's one of the things that the kids do in the classroom, is they'll share what they've written. So, in reading support, a lot of the times, the kids can talk together first, they can develop an idea, we can work together with them on what they're going to write, and their confidence level is so much higher when they go back to the classroom and being able to share what they've written. So, that's something that we do too. So, it's not different than what they're doing in the class, it's enhancing what they're doing in the class and making sure that the students are really able to participate with their peers and not just sit quietly in the room and hope they don't have to raise their hand or anything. So, we've seen some really great things with their confidence.
Can I ask a quick question on that? At the elementary level, I hear, can hear this is a question from, from parents, and you might have kind of good insight into it. So, when you talk about students writing, whether it's actually like generating a piece of text, writing in response to reading, what do you see as the balance between how often students are doing that writing electronically, important skill that kids have to have, but also by hand, right, kind of that, that traditional handwriting skill? And kind of in general, what do you see as the balance?
I'm seeing that in our building, there's a great mix of that, and I see that the teachers are understanding that there's a need for an opportunity for kids to do that electronically. So, they are able to put that on their Google Classroom. So, a lot of the times, the teachers will assign what they would have handwritten, that they'll assign it on Google Classroom, so they'll have that opportunity to type it out. For some of our students who have difficulty with that, there's an opportunity for them to do voice to text, and so, that'll type it out for them. So, we have some different things for students that have difficulties with that, but...
But they also have, they, they write every day, so they write a written response every day to, to the book. So, I would say they're at least writing three times a week, just handwritten, but we do need to give them an experience to type in and generate their thoughts, because they are asked to do that at the assessment of IAR. So, without giving them that experience to do that, that we would be holding them back at their performance.
So, Dr. Shuler, yes, especially at grades three through five, I know that all buildings are making a concerted effort to make sure that they're doing that, and even having them starting in second grade, so that they're not just like, oh, it's third grade, now we have to type all.
Thank you.
Okay, so, at middle school, the reading intervention is actually a course, it's called Academic Reading, and I said before, they take this in replacement of an elective. Reading specialists teach this course, or special education staff, each middle school only does have, this is different than elementary, they may have between one and 2.5 staff members. Corrective reading is a research-based program that we use in middle school if students need instruction in that green part of the rope. So, that is the research-based program we use. A few things about corrective reading, it's aimed for student, older students that have failed to master those early reading skills. It is effective because it teaches like those green parts of the rope, phonemic awareness, explicit phonics, it's systematic, it includes opportunities to build fluency, develop vocabulary, and comprehension. Our special education staff are trained to deliver corrective reading.
And is that delivered in lieu of a extracurricular elective?
An elective, yes. So, they're in a course, instead of being in an elective, they'll have, well, they have two elective periods, so one of their elective periods would be academic reading instead, and that's where they would get that instruction. So, we are also required to do something called progress monitoring as a part of MTSS. This allows, so Nancy and Lisa do progress monitoring on their students, and so, they are collecting data... And so they are collecting data on their students every other week. They are graphing that data and they are looking to see if the intervention is effective. Actually, we've been looking a lot at these progress monitoring charts this year through our collaboration with Dr. Daly and learning more about how to, you know, effectively make decisions around progress monitoring. The good news is, is we use FastBridge. It has progress monitoring built in. This was one of the reasons we did like FastBridge is because it has the universal screener and the progress monitoring right there. They go hand-in-hand. So of course, we still think that there's work to do. So we're happy with everything we're doing. We're really proud of it. We are seeing some great results from kids. But we also know that there are some things that we still need to do. So just a preview on that. At elementary, we are supporting our staff with that enhanced core instruction. So our reading coaches did professional learning for all staff on January 6th. And we're in the process of helping teachers implement that in classrooms. Our reading coaches and interventionists are working to implement the interventions that these two spoke to you about tonight. We just learned about them this year. So we're working to implement those. And then Alexis Hansen is working on looking at resource programming and how does that connect to Bookworms? And how do those teachers support tier-one? How do their interventions, you know, connect to Bookworms? And then I also, I already mentioned, Dr. Pueyo has a committee that is looking at multilingual learners and MTSS specifically for them. At middle school, we're going to start implementing My Perspective. This Friday, we actually have professional learning for our staff about My Perspectives. We are engaged in a review of the interventions at middle school. So in fact, we've had our second meeting and today was our second meeting. And this is with high school and middle school teachers. And we are looking at their interventions. And then they are also part of that work with Dr. Pueyo with multilingual learners. I do want to just say with the work at 612, specifically with reading intervention, we are really following our implementation process. I think the board has seen this image before. A lot of times, curriculum work takes a lot of time. There are a lot of phases to it. When we are talking about the 612 reading intervention, I'm just all the way over there in that blue phase one. So it's going to take time to, you know, make some adjustments and changes to what we're doing there. But we're excited about that work. So that brings us to the end of our slide deck. And I really wanted to just open up the opportunity, if you needed clarification or if there's anything you're interested in furthering discussing on these five topics that we presented to you this evening.
Sorry, I know I've had a lot of questions tonight, but I love this topic. So I have three more. Just thinking back to the elementary level where we have the differentiated instruction component of the block, how frequently do we evaluate whether someone needs to kind of move levels? And when that occurs, is that transparent or is there any discussion with parents to kind of signal how kids are moving?
That's a great question. Every three to six weeks, depending on the group. And the parents are notified. Sometimes we assign them a thing, "Congratulations, someone sort of moved down from this group to this group."
You need to be a little closer.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry. So yes, every three to six weeks, we do that. Students have a little assessment that they need to pass. And then we do, I don't know how regularly, but it may vary from building to building how often. But usually, the kids will even just say, "I got moved up to this next group now, so we're moving on." So it might just be a quick note letting them know, but it's a celebration for sure.
Okay. And then regarding FastBridge as a universal screener, you know, I know you noted that it can provide a flag, but it's not going to say, you know, does the student have dyslexia? When that flag is thrown, do we leverage any of the other, maybe more focused assessment tools like tests of dyslexia or MAP as a secondary?
Our folks in the buildings use diagnostic assessments to really pinpoint areas that students need further support with. So you guys could be doing a fluency assessment, right?
Or we could be doing, like, one of the assessments for them to get in their differentiated instruction groups on the stair steps is reading nonsense words and reading real words. Nonsense words has a point to tell you if the skill is fluent in automatic. I know it seems odd. We used to think the same thing, but I really hold on to this of when they can read a word that is not a real word and sounded out using the short vowels or the vowel teams, then they own that skill. And then also, if students are having difficulty with that, we would go back to a phonemic awareness assessment diagnostically and see if we're blending and segmenting. So we do have assessments that tell us more information in that area.
And actually, today with the middle school team, we were looking at some new diagnostic assessments specific to phonics screeners that we were talking about trying out with their students. So...
And then my last question is, maybe being a little bit old-school, I remember always as a parent having the, like, the novel lists. And I know we still have on our website, like, middle school novel list. Is that still valid? How does that fit in with the books that are associated with the Bookworms curriculum? Just trying to better understand that.
Yes. So the elementary novel list was pretty old and outdated. And I don't, I remember it as a teacher, but then when I came back to the district, I kind of found out it wasn't being utilized so much. And so we now utilize the materials that are in Bookworms. That's the novels. And there's many novels there. At the middle school level, we've adopted My Perspective that has passages and that are around themes. And so we are, we are looking to see how our novels pair with those passages. And we are going to be looking at our approved list. And our team is going to be evaluating whether we are going to be bringing some other books to the Board of Education to add to that novel list in the future.
Okay. One thing I might suggest, you know, as a parent, especially as the kids get older, the "What did you do at school today?" question always goes tremendously well. You know, "I don't remember."
Yeah.
"I don't know." But, you know, that list always provided an area, something to engage the kids on, like, you know, "Oh, you're reading this and how's it going? Tell me about it." So just to the degree we can keep that information current for parents, I think it would be good.
We actually, actually Dr. Moran put together, we got feedback from parents on that, and she put together unit guides that sit on our website now that actually outline every single unit and all of the texts that are within Bookworms. So we should probably do a better job of like pushing that out to families so that they know that that's there to start a conversation.
And I do feel like the students are really engaged with the books where, like Nancy had said, once they've read one of these books by this particular author, they're scrambling to get to the public library or our own library to check out another one. So I feel like these books have really gotten the kids very excited. And I think probably there are more kids going home now explaining what they've read in class that day.
We just had a, we were talking about this the other day, a lunchroom conversation of fourth graders. We're talking about, oh no, it's fifth graders because they're reading The Westing Game. And they're like, "Who do you think did it? What was the clue?" And they're at lunch discussing, discussing a book with each other because they're all reading the same book. So it's really a fun thing.
Thank you so much. It's been great to learn a little bit more about the science of literacy, the passion that you obviously have for the subject. And then also, you know, knowing that we had asked a lot of questions about dyslexia. Thank you for bringing that in.
Yeah.
If I can just piggyback on Eric's a little bit, thank you as well for coming. It's so nice to see you guys here.
We were very happy to be here.
Yes, very happy. Quick question. So with Eric's question about assessment and saying that dyslexia is on a spectrum, so if we have some of those kids who are on the more severe side of the spectrum, are we using a specific dyslexia assessment or no?
What we have are diagnostic assessments and FastBridge.
Okay. So then, thank you. Kids who might be in that more severe, moderate to severe classification of dyslexia or if they somehow get a diagnosis of dyslexia, is there a specific intervention that we are using in our buildings or...
Okay, so...
Outside of...
What they spoke to you tonight. So we have a small percentage of students that are considered tier-three that do, are involved in some other interventions that are called reading mastery or Wilson. It's a really small percentage of students.
And so some of the feedback I've heard in the community, is that offered at every school?
Wilson, we have, nearly all of our schools have a small number of students. There's a couple of schools that do not have students accessing Wilson at this time.
Because there aren't students who need it, is that...
That, I would have to dig into that a little bit more. But what I do know, I actually looked at this recently, the number of students that, at each building that have the Wilson intervention. And there were a couple of schools where they hadn't identified students or were, you know...
Melissa, can I ask a question? Just a different way. I think this is what Angela's asking. I just want to verify. There would be no reason why if there were students where that was a necessary intervention identified, that we wouldn't be providing that service.
Yeah. We have, we have staff that are trained to utilize that resource if we have identified students that need that.
And available at every school?
Yes.
And then is that also true for if, if a student has been identified and using the Wilson method in elementary school, when they go to middle school, does that carry with them?
Those are conversations that we are going to be having about our fifth graders moving up. So generally, there have been some challenges about moving forward with Wilson at the middle school level. But we are asking teams to look at those fifth graders as they move forward. And if the team has a decision that Wilson is an intervention that should continue, then we're going to figure out a way to provide that intervention to our students. But there are some challenges right now with, realistically, it doesn't mean we can't do it, but there just were some challenges that had prevented us from scaling Wilson to begin with. So some of those challenges are, the training is really intensive for Wilson. And so staff, we, the district had committed to elementary staff. We hadn't gotten to the middle school. Staff members go through a lot of training and they have a practicum with a student. Also staffing, there, we would have to consider staffing as well. So you saw our staffing at middle school with the difference between the reading specialist group. So there were some scaling situations that we would have to talk about. But Wilson is something that our middle school, sixth through 12 intervention committee is going to have a conversation about.
Okay. Thank you. One last question. Speaking to the state testing and using the computer, do we have the option to do paper and pencil tests for state testing?
Only for students who need that accommodation.
Okay. Thank you.
Relative to the middle school Wilson question, not that, you know, the legal bar should be always our way we measure ourselves. Obviously, we want to do better than what the law requires as a minimum. But our obligation is to provide a necessary intervention at the district level, not at a building level, correct? So if we needed Wilson at middle school level, we wouldn't necessarily have to offer it at every building.
I haven't, I've never thought about programming that way. But I do want to emphasize, we have corrective reading. So corrective reading is considered a highly effective intervention, just like Wilson. And so it is working on the same skills that Wilson is working on. It just was, our, the team had made a decision that that was the intervention that would work best at the middle school level. Another challenge with Wilson is it's delivered either one-on-one or like one-on-two, and the students have to have the exact same skill that you're working on. Whereas corrective reading can be worked on with multiple students, and it is considered effective in addressing word recognition skills.
First off, elementary classroom teachers, you know, this is kind of new. We've thrown a lot at them. What's their comfort level, you know, now versus kind of where we started? And then the second question is really a question about math. So can you talk about the importance of reading as a foundational skill for math?
Well, so the comfort level... I'm happy to address the comfort level. I, I think when you have let go of something that you have been doing for several years to take a leap of faith and do something completely different than what you've done, it's going to rattle anybody a little bit. But I feel that our teachers have seen how great this is and how their students' needs are being met in so many ways. I can't tell you how many hundreds of books these students will have read by the time they're done with the Bookworms program in elementary school. So their exposure to books, the curriculum is so rich for them, the amount of writing that the students are doing, and the fact that the teachers have these materials that they can readily use and that they can meet with a teammate and have valid discussions about what they're going to be doing with their students that week because everything is all on the same, same page. They're teaching the same thing. So I feel that they are seeing the value in this. And like I said at the beginning, I think anything, trying something new is difficult. And the more you have exposure to it and the more you use it and see the value in it, the more they're engaged with it and liking it.
And I'll add on to the cohesiveness of grade levels. It makes for a common discussion. They're, they stay within lessons of each other, so they're not off in a different book. And the amount of conversations they can have and say, "Hey, my student did this for the written response. What did your student do?" And comparing that piece, it's been a great way for them to be just cohesive and feel better about their instruction, that they're all having the same high expectations.
And the depth of their instruction. I feel that's really important.
Just to clarify my question about math.
Yeah.
You know, so problem-solving, word problems.
There's a lot of language in math. Like, if you were to open up the IAR assessment and look at the problems that are on there, there are complex word problems that require students to have proficiency in reading.
So it seems to me, I mean, you look at math scores across country compared to reading.
Yeah.
It seems to me that you improve math by making sure that our students are fluent, comprehension, the kinds of questions are going to be asked.
Right. The language in math is there too, right? Yep.
Matt, can I just come back to your question because they did not share it, but I'm telling you critically important, part of the reason why teachers are in the place that they are is because of the job-embedded coaching that you've provided. So there is no way that with two really, really complex instructional resources that have been implemented, that our teachers would be in the place they were if you did not, as a board, continue to support the coaching resource in both. So I'm just, I want to mention that. I think that has been a huge piece of the puzzle.
Yes. I wish I would have had that at my fourth. You're absolutely right. It has been cohesive for everyone to get the same message. We're all at the same level. We have been able to help and support the teachers' math and reading. The coach position is a great way. Weekly, we can come back and increase the instruction and intensify. It's just, it's a wonderful, wonderful way to do it.
And thank you, Dr. Shuler.
Jeff, are we at a point of diminishing returns there? If we had a financial windfall that allowed us to put more coaches in place, would we see a material improvement or are we now good?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's probably a better, Melissa, question. I think what you're hearing in the work plan though, Eric, is that now as you move from just kind of the comprehensive tier-one general support, I think the focus has to be in really like targeted areas of need. And so I think we have, we have obviously our reading and math, coach support, but we've also got some other layers of support that I think will need to be there. So we'll never have enough resource, right? Like, there will always be another, another need. But I, I don't necessarily think that just simply unlocking a whole nother layer would necessarily do it. I think it's going to be in really kind of targeted areas as specific kind of intervention needs rise.
My thinking all along during the time I've been here is that we need to meet every single student where that student is and help them move forward from where they are toward their maximum abilities and interests. And what I see here tonight is just so focused on that, that we're not letting any of them slip through the cracks without catching them and trying to get them back on track again. I really admire what you're doing there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So I don't have any questions, but I do have a few comments. You know, this, on the, on the bottom, you know, the stuff that you guys have gone through really helps to, you know, to realize and keep in context that this is still new and in its infancy and, but it's just nice... And, but it's just nice to see how it really is kind of maturing and, you know, and I mean, I think Brad's question was a good one because there was, I know skepticism at first. And it's a big change and it's a big ask for, for the teachers. But now as it becomes embedded and hopefully we keep this for quite a while. But it's also not stagnant, right? I can tell just by the way you talk. So really appreciate that. And I, you know, I, I really liked the beginning part on the, the science and dyslexia. Thanks for that, that depth, you know, especially on dyslexia. I mean, I, I don't really understand two things, just that it's a little more than just what you see. Because that's kind of what I, you know, and then secondly, the fact that, that can change over time. So if you have dyslexia in first grade, by the time you're in fifth or sixth grade, maybe you don't. If, if we're successful. So that, that was kind of a good learning for me. So thanks for kind of getting deep on that.
And I'll just say, if a student does have dyslexia, they actually will have dyslexia forever. But we can strengthen those parts of the brain so that they're not impacted severely.
Yeah, okay. Good, good clarification. Thank you.
Right.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
Jeff, one, one final comment and then a question. So one final comment, I, we acknowledged, certainly thanked our coaches. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize, thank our elementary administrators as well, our principals. We've asked them to come alongside, kind of in the learning with the, the curriculum. And, and so the coaches couldn't do their work without a building administrator partnering with them. So I just want to call that out. And then I guess the question, Chris, not so much for, for answer tonight, but just to think about. I, I think about our SEL framework. And as I think about the components where we've put energy, right? There, there's that, that piece of the SEL framework focused on mindset. And as we get deeper into this curriculum work and think about that, I just wonder about the role and, and perhaps kind of coming back and reflecting on that component of the SEL framework.
Yeah. One, great connection. While tonight's topic is reading, we identified that connection right away in our math work, right? And I, and I actually did some, integrated that into the implementation process. And while we haven't called it out directly in that correlation, the ties to like high expectations, all kids can learn, all kids can have access to grade level learning because all kids can learn at high levels is the exact reason why mindset sits in our framework. So I would look forward to highlighting that in any way or collaborating on it. But yeah, great connection and highlights just exactly to what Mr. Rutledge said too. Meeting every kid where they're at and taking them to their highest level. So.
No more comments or questions? Okay. There being, being no further action to come before the board, an open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Stop moving. Second.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, and I skipped, yeah.